The only thing I ask you is why did you say we appreciate jobs, appreciate the job they do?
Something that fits open up?
I think that's what you had in there.
Did it? Why did I do that?
Yeah, we did. We opened it to spend a year.
I'm just saying, we appreciate. We, the planes appreciate.
He's helping us a lot.
Does he?
Good.
I mean, we're, in the end. Not the job they do. We appreciate the, uh.
That we owe him, right?
The ability to, I don't know. Think about that.
Okay, I'll think about it.
He's got a really good sheet.
What I wanted to say was, we're not against people on their planes.
He's gotta do what he's gotta do.
They just don't trash our town.
Yeah.
You're gonna charge us twelve months.
Figure that and let me know and we'll do it then.
Would you see the truck right over town the other day?
Oh, yeah.
There ain't much of, we've, they've been, they're like new owners.
They've been at the center for like two, two, two years. Oh, newbie center?
They're, they're new.
I don't know.
They're local, they're kind of Modesto.
Yes.
I just set up a. Okay, uh, Tammy, you ready?
One stop shop, you missed it this time, we ain't doing it.
Yeah, and they, they did, so.
Ready?
We're good. I was just over there.
Are you ready?
A lot of people in there.
Uh, let me start?
Not here yet.
So good to have businesses that are closed in town.
I only told them four times I wouldn't be here.
This conference will now be recorded.
That package isn't though.
It's not here yet?
No.
Okay.
On the floor. I'll let you know.
We'll, we'll keep looking for it.
I'll call him tomorrow and see what's up.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay? That's just a fraction.
I worked there once.
Did you?
Things I, yeah.
I've got probably ten pages.
One day.
I'm serious. I won't tell you.
Just wanted to know, I have.
Ready?
I have the best pepperoni pizza.
All right. Uh, welcome to March first, city council meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ballinger?
Here.
Councilmember Kramic?
Here.
Councilmember Swift?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Leggero?
Here.
And Mayor Als.
Here. Okay, we have some presentations. Oath of officer presented to Officer Eder Cruz. And who, the chief's gonna handle that?
Chief is going to handle that and need to make you sure. Let me get you the mic, yeah. Doesn't have an Eder.
Enjoy my emails?
Had it.
Yeah. Give them to Josh and everybody.
Mine's paying off.
Well, the people started to go.
Mama too, I guess.
That's cool that his daughter do that. Only a little town like this should get away with that one.
Counsel, I'll be swearing in Officer Eder Cruz tonight. Uh, a little background on Eder. He grew up in Modesto. He graduated from Argus High School in Series. He's a certified automotive mechanic prior to the academy, uh, which he went to at San Joaquin Delta. Uh, he's married to Juliana, who I believe is here tonight with him, part of the family. Um, Elias, he's got, how many, how many kids you've got? Three?
I got two.
Two children, Elias, who's five.
Is he here?
And Alina, seven-year-old? Okay, got that right. Uh, he started with the Escalon Police Department in August of twenty twenty. Uh, full-time. He was a reserve prior to that. Uh, we did steal him away from, he's got prior law enforcement experience with Stockton PD as well as Department of Homeland Security, and we were lucky enough to steal him away from them.
Excellent.
Okay, Eder. You repeat after me, okay? I will try to go slow and not mess this up for you. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Eder Cruz.
Do solemnly swear, hold on a second, Eder, I know what's wrong.
Needs his glasses on. And I can't see.
Okay, aye, state your s- name.
Aye, Eder Cruz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear, bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, you're up.
Oh, I gotta get that picture. Dangerous. I got it. Yeah. Put him on Facebook. She put that all better and quicker than you do.
Hey, Cruzado, you wanna say a few words?
I think I'm, oh, actually, yeah.
Yeah, sign right here and then go up to the podium.
You wanna introduce your family or anybody?
Um, sure, Howard. If it's okay with everybody here, I would like to introduce my family.
Absolutely.
Who has supported me through the entirety of my law enforcement career. Obviously, you guys know my daughter here, Alina. Um, little story about her. Today, she was, uh, uh, recognized as student of the month, so I'm very proud of her. My son is that handsome young gentleman down there. Say hi, Elias. Say hi. He's a little shy. My wife's the one holding the, the, the child, that's Juliana. My mom's to, just to the left of her. My dad's out there with the camera. He won't go a day without videoing something, so. I appreciate you, chief. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Uh, I really, truly, genuinely like working for Escalon. One thing that my wife said on my first day was, you look, you look happy. Uh, this is referring to when I was working for Stockton. It was just a different game. Um, so coming here, I can see where people are very generous, very, very outgoing, very outstanding with us as police officers. And a joke that was kinda said is, hearing Escalon, we're gonna wave at you with five fingers instead of one, which I thought was awesome. So with that, I appreciate it, and then I'm gonna do everything I can for the, for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we have another oath of office presented to Officer Joseph, how do you pronounce the last name? Fagon?
Fagoni, sir.
Fagoni.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Fagoni. Chief, it's all yours.
A little bit about Mr. Fagoni. Uh, he grew up in Lodi. Um, he graduated from Lodi High. He also graduated from Sac State with a BA in government. Um, he attended the academy at Delta, San Joaquin Delta College. He's got prior law enforcement experience. He actually worked for Stockton, which thankfully did not work out, and we have him now. Um, his dad will be doing the pinning, Mr. Mike Fagoni, who believes here, and I will hand the badge over. All right, let me prepare before I start. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Fagoni.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties. Go ahead.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
All right, Dan, you're up.
This is my stepmom, my stepd- my, I'm sorry, my stepmom and my dad. Um, I just wanna say thank you to the city council and thank you to the chief for giving me the opportunity to serve. I'll keep it brief. I'm just looking forward to getting to work and being an asset to the city, and hopefully one day I could be a full-time officer.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, good job, chief. Good job. Welcome aboard, gentlemen. All right. Our next item up looks like it's a consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. That also includes those online. If you're following us and you have something you'd like to present, let us know. I will accept a motion.
Mayor Als, regarding item number two, I'll be abstaining from voting on check numbers, yeah, number two?
Okay.
I'll be abstaining from voting on check numbers nine, seven, seven, zero, and seven, four, eight, six, four.
Very good. I will accept a motion for the balance.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Five vote. We don't, we don't have to go back and vote. He just doesn't vote, right? Yeah, that's what it is.
No, I'm just abstaining on those two check numbers.
All right, let's move on down to staff communication.
Okay, so I have one item of discussion that I've put on there, and we can discuss that, and then we'll go to, I have several other items, and Dominique has a couple also. So, um, staff has been approached regarding a small piece of property that is on, um, it's on Santa Fe, um, or Main Street. Everybody refers to it differently. Um, but there was a development that was, um, what was the development name, Dominique? Do you recall?
Stepping Stones.
Stepping Stones. And, um, when that development map was, uh, established, there was a small parcel that was, um, put into the city's name that would be for open land or for, um, like a park or for a, um, storm basin.
How much of that land you're showing us is being dedicated to the city?
So it's a four thousand square foot land. There's four thousand.
Is that the point?
Huh?
Is that the point or the other land adjacent to it?
It's right triangular, right here, correct.
So the whole piece has been dedicated to us?
Yes.
Several years ago.
The house?
Several years ago, it was dedicated to us in a map, and it's, and it's never been developed.
So the, does that include the house?
No.
No, no.
It's, it's, it's empty land.
Just the front point there?
It's.
That's the triangle?
It's, it comes probably, it comes off the back of this parcel here.
Uh-huh.
And then down the front and back like this.
So not this point out here at the point? It's just behind this house?
It's behind the house. Yeah, it's not on the corner.
That corner is a separate lot. Yeah.
So that land has been dedicated. Got it.
So, um, staff was recently approached and asked, um, about potential of selling this property. So tonight, what I am looking for from the council is direction. We've talked with engineering, and they don't see the requirement for this, for a storm basin, um, and probably not big enough to be any kind of open land park. So, uh, we're wanting consensus from the council if you are open to surplusing the land. Uh, if we surplus the land, there's a process that we go through. I have to do a public advertisement with a public hearing. Then we have to offer it to other agencies in the area, other government agencies, the school district, um, and we give them sixty days for first right of refusal. And then after that, then we either can hire an agent to sell the property, or we can do a sealed bid, um, on the pro- on the property.
I have a question for you. That land that's four thousand square feet is not, does not meet the minimum requirement for a lot in Escalon?
It doesn't.
It is a substandard.
So you have a substandard lot that's a triangle right there, and what could possibly go on there?
Um, our municipal code has language in it that does allow the construction of a home. That lot is zoned R1, um, and so a small house can go on it.
Well, by the time you do the setback and everything, you've got nothing left.
It would be a very small house, yes.
So has anyone expressed interest that's adjacent to it?
No.
So in the past, we did have another developer that was looking at the property, the other properties along here, including this one with this house. And they were interested, um, at that time, but that project never came to fruition, so.
Because they wanted us to put the sidewalks in.
Because.
As part of the agreement.
Because we wanted them to put the.
They wanted us to put the sidewalks in.
Oh, well, this, this one was more recent. That wasn't, um, that wasn't the issue on this one. We're not quite sure what happened with it, but, but anyway, the developer never returned.
And in this area of town going along Main Street, there are no utilities, so constructing those parcels headed towards the riverbank area or in that direction, whoever develops those lots would obviously have to put in the infrastructure for water and sewer.
Well, how are those other homes serviced in the adjacent property?
They're serviced off vine.
So this house that's on, uh, that house is on, uh, well and septic.
Yeah.
Okay, so they weren't brought in the city yet.
Not yet.
They're in the well.
Well, they're in the city, but they're existing.
Well, still kept the well.
Yeah.
Who owns the adjacent lots?
Uh, it's a corporation.
There's a corporation that owns three of them. They're, they're called BBSC.
Okay, is that the point and the, the lots east of that?
Uh, the lots all to the east, correct.
How many lots are there east of that piece of land?
Three.
Yeah.
Those are pretty small lots.
Um, those ones are, um, I believe they're, they're the minimum lot width.
Which is what, five thousand?
Yeah, and they're, and they're deeper, so they do meet, they do beat the, uh.
The standard.
The city standard, correct. And we do acknowledge existing lots that were, that were incorporated before we made changes to the code, so they are still allowed to build a house on them.
What about the point? How big is the point?
The, the one on the corner?
Yes.
I wanna say ten thousand square feet.
That big?
Approximately. Might, it might be a little bit larger, but that's a separate property owner.
And then what we're asking this evening is if this council would consider selling it. Uh, gentlemen, what do we got here? Dave, we got any?
I don't see that we can really do anything with it for the city's use. It's such a small property. I would be open to entertaining offers and listening, at least.
Hmm, Councilman Kramic?
Same.
Councilman Swift?
Yeah, same thing. I'd just be curious to see if either of the other property owners, what would be their intention if they were interested in purchasing it, because then you would have something like an economy of scale to maybe build something on. So, but yeah, that's fine.
Counsel, Vice Mayor?
Uh, you said it was BCS that owns the three parcels next to it?
BBSC.
BBSC, okay, so have, how long have they owned those parcels? And have they?
I'd say.
Talking about developing them?
Three or four years, and that was the group that was moving forward on developing them. Um, and, and then at, at some point, they just decided not to move forward.
Is there?
They actually have those properties up for sale.
They are all up for sale. They've been up for sale for probably at least a year.
Okay.
If not longer.
So that if they were to acquire that parcel, that wouldn't make it any more attractive for them to develop that area?
We tried to work something out with that when we were working with them, um, to where we would, um, credit, credit the value of that parcel over to them for, um, for infrastructure, when they're putting the infrastructure in and let them build on it, uh, but, but that still didn't work out either.
Okay.
What do you think, uh, a lot like that might be worth?
That was my question.
So before we would sell it, um, we would.
You're an appraiser, I get it.
We would get it appraised. I honestly can't tell you. I have no idea at this point.
Let me ask Mr. Haskin here. No idea.
And with no services, I, I know that's kinda.
My, my point is this.
So those other lots, they're asking fifty to sixty-five per lot.
Okay, my point is this. It's not enough money for us to really worry about selling it, I'll tell you. So what I would think personally, this is just me, is just hang on to it, because when they go to develop that other land, it'll improve the value of that piece of land we have. And if that's the time, you probably wanna liquidate it, not now.
Or wait to see who buys those other three.
And we might use that as a bargaining chip to help develop it. But if we sell it, we might get somebody who hangs on to it and makes everybody miserable, and this way we own it. It doesn't cost us anything, and if we do decide to develop that environment there, we have a bargaining chip. So my advice, or my, my feeling is, is just leave it alone. Because we're not gonna gain, by the time you pay for an appraisal and all the other garbage is gonna go into this thing, we're not gonna make probably maybe ten thousand bucks if we're lucky. So I just don't think it's worth the hassle. I think we just leave it there and land bank it.
I see what you're saying from a timing standpoint. Yeah, do we, do we do that first, or do we find out who buys that first? You're right, 'cause that could actually help ours, help the situation.
It would help us, because whoever develops that property, they're gonna need some help.
Yeah.
And this is an opportunity that we could help them help us.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a nice bargaining chip to use in a development like that. They say that somebody comes in and says, I wanna develop that area. Good. We'll give you this piece of land, but here's what you gotta, we're gonna help, but we want the sidewalks in too.
This, this is Mark, Mark Velasquez. Just for clarification, you don't need to do the appraisal as part of the surplus land, uh, surplus land. So if you surplus it, you don't need to do the cost of the appraisal, um, until this, until the city actually wants to or needs to. So it's not a necessary cost.
All right. But I still think we ought to just hang on to it.
Maybe we've, we've been on the, we've been on the, the surplus thing for a while.
Yeah, just let it settle on the surplus. Do we have a consent? Do we need a vote on this, Tammy?
I definitely need a consensus from the council on this.
Gentlemen, uh, do we have a consensus on hanging on the property and wait and see?
I'm okay with it.
Anybody opposed to it?
I am. I wanna, I think we should sell it.
Okay, we have one opposed and we have four, or four. So we're gonna keep it.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Uh, wait, we got some more staff communications.
That's what I meant.
Go ahead, Dominique.
So I have a few updates, uh, from Development Services. Um, we have scheduled a meeting with the Retirement Housing Foundation. They are the property owners, um, and property managers of Heritage House. Um, as we've talked about in the past, we're having that meeting with them on March ninth, um, to discuss potential of a future project. Um, the city was recently awarded sixty-five thousand dollars in LEAP funding. Uh, LEAP funding is similar to the SB two funding that we've come to council, um, in the past for, that we were also awarded, um, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It is money from the state, um, or HCD, Housing Community Development, um, to be used to increase housing production. So obviously, for our town, it's very limited at this point on the items that we can use it for. Um, we have.
Can it be used for affordable housing too?
Um, it, it might be able to, uh, but when we applied for the grant, um, we applied and got approval to put it towards our Phase Two sewer pipeline. We tried to put it into infrastructure.
Do that, a good idea.
Okay, and so that's where we had, were approved to use that funding, and so that money, um, it's a reimbursement process, obviously, so we, we need to be refunded or reimbursed, and so we're putting that towards Phase Two sewer, uh, pipeline replacement project.
Good.
Um, and then Planning Commission is meeting next week. Um, we have three seats on the Planning Commission that will be up, uh, for vacancies in June, and so we will be putting the advertisements out, uh, for thirty days encouraging applications.
Perfect.
Is that a election or just an appointment?
Appointment. Appointment by the council.
There's a committee, we have a committee.
We put applications out for about thirty days.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's you two guys.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and then we do have a subcommittee, which is two members of the council. They conduct interviews, and then they're appointed at a meeting. And that's all I have.
Perfect.
The, uh, SB two funds, that's what's being used for the, is municipal services review?
Um, the SB two funds, which we have an item that's discussed later in the agenda, will be, uh, covering the municipal services review, um, design guidelines for multifamily and senior housing development projects, and we also have a portion of it that will be, uh, reimbursing us for our most recent update to the housing element, um, that was completed back in two thousand, the end of two thousand nineteen, early twenty twenty.
Excellent.
All right, so I have a few other items. Um, this afternoon, I received an email, um, from the county requesting if they could use the community center for a vaccination site this Saturday, um, March sixth, from ten to five PM. Um, they will be giving out about three hundred doses. The county will be outreach to, um, extreme risk people, sixty-five and older, plus ag workers from the Escalon area. Um, we are, um, going to need to provide them about five workers for this event, and we've already started working on that.
What date is it again, please?
This Saturday, March sixth.
March sixth, okay.
Yeah. So, um, you can't just schedule an appointment. They're going based on, um, those that have logged into sjready.org and registered, and also health records, a health database that they have, but they're using, they're utilizing Escalon area to pool for those appointments. Um, if anybody is interested in getting an appointment, then the best, um, avenue is to go to sjready.org and, um, sign up for the vaccination.
And how will this be advertised?
Um, I, you know, again, this is fresh, so, um, I don't know how much they're gonna advertise. Um, I'll find out a little bit more tomorrow. Um, but sjready.org, and then if you go to vaccine entrance, interest to sign up.
They're probably already gonna.
Okay, have we put this on our webpage for everyone?
Yeah, we've posted this site before, but once I get a little bit more information, I can post this on the.
How about the bulletin board out there on the highway? Can we do that one?
Well, um, we can, but it's kinda short notice, so it's only three hundred doses. I don't know how far we'll get, but we'll, I mean, we can put it up there.
You think we'll get three hundred here from town?
Um, surrounding, potentially.
There's a lot of people who've gotten shots already.
Yeah.
So I don't know what, how many, if we have, my point would be this. If we don't have three hundred seniors, it'd be nice to have the other people in line for it so we could get it.
Well, I think that they're regulated by the state of who they can offer it to.
Only seniors?
Seniors and ag workers right now is what they're opening it to.
Ag workers, please.
Ag workers. So, um, that's, that's where it's open to right now, so they'll, so if they can't pull from our area, they would open up the spectrum and go a little bit farther out and open the appointments up to others.
From what I'm understanding, if you're already registered on that, it's like, okay, then you get notified. Hey, by the way, there's one here. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
And I, yes, and I will confirm that tomorrow, because I know that, um, the county had initially started their own, um, notify system of when you would be available, and then the state stepped in and said, you have to use our system. So I just wanna make sure that, um, people don't have to re-register in the, in the system, that all of that information was pulled over.
And do you think you'd be having any issue getting volunteers?
No, we've already started working on it, and I think we're good, 'cause they're only requiring me to have like five or six people.
I'll mention, I'll mention another name after the meeting, who's somebody who wanted to volunteer, so.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, yeah, no problem. Um, so my next matter, um, I just wanted to keep the council abreast. Um, I am, uh, the agreement with PACE is underway to develop the most cost-effective approach for the city's connection to the SSJ, um, ID surface water plant. Um, I did have conversation with Andy Comar last Friday. Um, and then the governor recently made a change for youth sports, and, um, even if you're in the purple tier, as long as your case count per hundred ca- um, hundred thousand is at fourteen, youth sports can start. So, um, we, um, actually already opened up our recreation baseball and softball signups, um, as of last Friday. We anticipate tomorrow that the county will be certified at the fourteen. Um, they were, we were seventeen last week, so we think that we will be at fourteen. So we will get that going. It will be a short signup time. It's only until March fifteenth. Um, and then, once we get that, then we need to, um, form teams, order uniforms, so we're thinking that we won't be starting our games until, um, beginning of May, and then we'll end in June. Um, it will, it will mean that there will be games. Um, it will, it will mean that there will be games both Saturdays and on the weekend, or on the weekdays in the evenings, just trying to spread out games. Um, and then T-ball may be played, um, part of our budget this year was putting in three new backstops at Sanchez, Edgewood, and Swanson. Um, and we may be utilizing those areas to play T-ball games at.
That's a good idea.
Um, we may just focus on one, cause we'll put, we'll need to put a porta potty out there, so.
Mission Street already has a backstop in its park, I don't know if you.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, um, so that is the plan on recreation.
Where's the backstop gonna go at, at Sanchez, like, by the equipment on, or?
I am not sure of the exact position of it.
They put three of them in, so I don't know where they went.
Put it in the.
Well, we haven't put them in yet. I think they're, they're going to be putting them in this month.
I thought Justin was there today doing that.
Oh, he could have been.
The basin though? Yeah, I believe that, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that makes the most reasonable sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the most open area. There's plenty down there.
Yeah, so.
Now, T-ball's the only one that's gonna be active at that time?
No, T-ball's the, the ones that we would probably utilize the outside, outlaying parks.
Other baseball ages will be gone too.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna go up to age ten, um, for the boys and the girls. The, um, the hardest part right now is in the upper ages, sometimes we only get one or two teams and we can't really count on playing other cities.
Right.
And so it would mean that those two teams play each other all season long and that doesn't hardly seem like a, um, like a fun time for them.
The reason we're breaking these up now, what's the exact reason we're breaking these up?
Oh, to maintain, to follow some of the guidelines that the state has out there.
Okay, because I, I, the thing I can see right now, you're gonna have parents with two children that are gonna be different ages. You're gonna have them split up, so that's gonna be a tough chore on them.
Yeah.
Watch both kids and move them around. Mom and dad are both gonna have to be, or they're gonna have to go with a friend. I just wanna know that was, so this is more about COVID?
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good to know.
So, um.
Stayed unhappy.
So, um, the dinosaur park playground equipment was brought up last meeting.
Right.
Um, and so, uh, Justin did look at, oh, this is making me upset here. Uh, Justin did go, um, out and, or he has actually evaluated this previously. And, sorry.
It's okay.
Here we go. So this is, um, pictures of the dinosaur park here. Um, there is a total of four slides on this, um, structure. So obviously, this fourth one here is the one that we had to take down. The problem with this equipment is that you cannot buy retrofit slides. So we are not able to replace just that slide, we would have to replace the whole, the whole unit.
And why again is that?
The whole structure.
Why again is that?
Because they're, they don't sell retrofits for these, for the structures.
They don't sell, uh, spare parts is what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, if you bought a whole new system, you could take the components that you need from that new system and leave your infrastructure in and just reconnect it, which would save a lot of time and effort.
Well, except for a whole new structure is about thirty-three thousand and then by the time you get all the labor and delivery, you're at fifty.
I'm not surprised, they're pricey.
Yeah.
And they have to be what, certified and all that stuff?
Right, yeah.
How, how long has this equipment been on site? When it was installed, give or take?
Since ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's ninety-six is when the district was formed.
Okay, I was just curious what the lifespan was on that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was ninety-six.
Let me ask you this, is this even used, this, this playground?
Well, it must be, we got a request to.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Well, is there other types of playground equipment we could put in there that wasn't so costly?
Unfortunately, there's not when you have to be, you know, you have to meet all the safety requirements in your park.
Are there smaller structures or less expensive structures that might be more?
This is probably one of the smallest structures. I mean, even when we put the new equipment in the, back here in Swanson, I wanna say it was right in that thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range.
I just gotta say, I built a slide for my kids for about a hundred fifty dollars.
We'll get you out there, Peter.
Be awesome.
It's a business opportunity for somebody to make retroactive parts for all these play structures.
Fifty, thirty, forget the pizza thing, get into this.
And what's, what's the brand? Do we know the brand?
Um, the, the brand of this, I don't know, but we looked at, does this give me a brand? Justin, do you know the brand?
Specified play equipment company.
The, the current, the current brand of the one that's in there now is Miracle. The one that, uh, that's the one we're not able to retrofit or buy pieces for. Um, but the one that we're currently be looking at is a Burke, which you are able to retrofit if you lose parts on it, at least currently. But it seems like with playground equipment after about ten years, they're long and gone and it's hard to replace anything on them.
Thank you.
Funny how that works.
Yeah.
Is there any, that, that landscape district, um, I think the last time we talked about it, I don't think we had any kind of a funding mechanism for replacement of that.
Well, we did, we were collecting some monies for the replacement and we have a reserve balance of about fifty-four hundred dollars. But that is our district that has stopped, that the, the cost to maintain the districts, um, are, is not allowing us to continue to put that capital money away.
Don't you need to go to a vote?
Correct, you'd have to take a vote. This, um, I brought this back to the council, um, a few months ago, where we were talking about potentially expanding that district to include other phases of the original development.
Don't say they have to vote it in, right?
Yeah, it would have to be voted in, correct.
You, you know, I know we talked about that at the time and, and I'll mention it again, you know, the notion of at least sending some letter, some notice out to the people in that district saying, listen, here's the situation. You have, you know, a, an aging piece of, you know, of playground equipment there that everybody loves.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have any funding mechanism to pay for it. Um, how badly do either, you know, you wanna have a special fund like, uh, the Swanson neighborhood did, you know, to, uh, fund new, uh, playground equipment? Or again, the alternative is just slowly gonna take one side off, take another side off, take another side off. I think that we owe it to at least to that neighborhood to inform them of the dilemma that we're in.
Let me tell you what they're gonna ask you, the first thing, and you better have that answer before you start, what's it gonna cost?
True, oh yeah, now that'd have to be part of that letter.
I would have that number in place and then present it and then you're gonna get an answer quick.
Mm-hmm.
But when we're. Isn't the, isn't the idea to, if they, if the people that lived in that area voted for this, it would be like most of the other, um, landscape districts?
LLCs.
That they would have a, a multiplier, they could go up, up to the what, three percent every year?
Yeah.
It would be just like the other ones, so they'd be voting to basically tax themselves, you know?
Good luck with that.
So.
Well, it worked at, the Swanson neighborhood did it.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
Well, the Swanson neighborhood was a.
Maybe there should be.
LLC.
No, 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 so Swanson neighborhood though, um, what had happened was similar to what had happened in Belatera, where funds had, the funds had actually exceeded the maintenance so much that they had a built-up reserve. And so, um, in Belatera, we, um, did the, the lighting to LED and then in Swanson, we, we had, um, a couple of residents that had asked about putting playground equipment. So we did poll the, um, district or, um, had the district vote on if they would approve adding that additional structure there with, with their excess funds. So in this case, it's a little bit different where there is no current excess funds to replace that.
I, I just say again, things are gonna only degrade more as time goes on and, uh, the longer we wait to address that, with that community, hey, we may give them a letter, give them a number and here's what it'll take to save the dinosaur structure, and they may say, I'll forget it. But at least, they'll know.
How about a grant? Can we get any grants for that?
Um, well, we haven't been very successful with those. Usually, again, it goes back to they want your, um, household, your median household income to be below a certain level.
Well, you would wanna take that from that community over there, not the whole city, would you? Or would you do the whole city?
Yeah, then you would have to do a census to, to establish that, mm-hmm.
And that may be a situation, might qualify, we don't know.
Yeah.
How difficult would it be to derive a number as to what the replacement cost of that would be?
Well, we have the, what the replacement cost is, about fifty thousand.
So I mean, how would it, I mean, how hard would it be to structure it so that you send the letter out? Hey, this is what we might be looking at.
Well, I guess, I guess you would have to evaluate what you're gonna do. Or, are, are we gonna, is the city gonna front the funds with the general fund and have the district pay it back? Are you gonna want it to accumulate over a certain number of years and then be able to purchase that equipment?
It's not getting any younger.
Yeah.
I mean, it might have five years left, it might have one year left. So it all depends on when that finally has to be taken down and that's gonna be when it doesn't get certified anymore.
Right.
Well, how about this, what if we went to those communities over there and asked them if they're interested in doing what you suggested?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But that's what he's saying.
But if they say no, then ask them if they'd mind if we'd sell it.
Sell what the?
That lot, the whole damn lot.
Well, I think some playground's better than no playground.
Well, you got one across the street there, big one.
Kids don't have to cross that street though to get there.
Well, parents are gonna have to get their kids there to play T-ball and everything else, what's the difference?
They're capped at a hundred and twenty.
Somewhere in there, one twenty-nine or something. Yeah, whatever, when that district was established, it wasn't established with any kind of inflator in it. So it's, it's been at the same rate since its establishment.
Is that per year, they'd be one twenty-nine each household?
Yes.
And how many households are in that particular district?
Um, I don't have that number.
I think it's eighty something.
Eighty something times a hundred and twenty-nine?
Cause there's some sections of that that don't have anything.
Yeah, like Genevieve.
Yeah.
So, so that hundred and twenty-nine dollars goes, is it, is it for the dinosaur park or is there the, the frontage maintenance?
Well, it's, it's also for other landscape maintenance too. It's for the, um, it's actually responsible, the masonry wall, that's along Escalon Avenue there and that landscape. And I wanna say possibly the median, but I'm not po- positive on that.
I think there's another park in there, isn't that included in there?
There's a Stormgrace on the Mason Park of some sort.
Uh, the Storm Basin, I don't believe is part of the park.
That's on the other side, one, four side, right, yeah. I don't think that's in part of that district anyway.
Yeah.
That'd be a park right there, you'd have a park.
Well, they use it as a park, they use that as a slide in the middle of summer.
My point, my point is, if you had that one park, maybe we could get rid of the other one.
You just saying to hold on to property ten minutes ago?
I did. This property is a lot more valuable. This property is very valuable.
Hey, you, you may have the consensus that people say, you know what, forget it, just get rid of the park.
Well, that's my point.
I, I do know that there are a couple of, of well-versed kiddos at the last meeting though that do enjoy that park at least. I know that, I see others there too, so I think it'd be worth a shot to, to pursue it and mention it to that neighborhood. Here's where.
So what do you wanna guys, what's, what's the direction we wanna get staff? You wanna have staff go ahead and do a survey and see whether or not there's enough interest to create, uh, a larger district to afford it or what?
Well, if we, a couple of months ago, we decided not to go forward with larger district.
Okay.
Now, if we wanna change our mind on that, that's great, but if, as long as we're working with what we have, then we can only send the letters out to the people that are currently in that district.
So what are you gonna ask those people?
Here's the situation with the dinosaur park, here's the, the situation, this, the structure, it's aging. It's gonna eventually be aged out. Do, here's what it would cost as initial fee, fee rate, whatever, on your annual bill to replace this for the next twenty-five years.
Is that fifty grand, is that fifty grand include labor?
Yes.
So now that's based on prevailing wage?
Yes.
So what if we bought the materials and had, uh, donated to labor? What if the Lions Club was willing to go do it but not buy it?
Well, I guess there would.
What's the cost of the labor in that project at fifty grand?
The equivalent was thirty-three.
The labor itself is around twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, so that's forty thousand dollars for the unit itself, or the.
Thirty-eight, yeah.
Eight, whatever, twelve, well, twelve thousand's a big knockout.
Hey, Justin, is there a workaround so that you can have volunteers put those structures together? Or does it have to be, uh, you know?
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage.
It has to be, it has to be a, it has to be a certified playground, um, installer and it has to be certified, um, by a playground inspector when it's done.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I thought, dang it.
And also, when we do retrofit dinosaur park, we will have to add a few ADA requirements as far as ramps and things like that as well. Anything I would do to the park now, even if we were to add, um, a water fountain to the park, we would have to start adding some ramps and other things in. So we will have to do a little bit of upgrading, other than just purchasing the equipment for the play, uh, for the park itself.
Yeah, this, this is Mark Velasquez, I actually have a friend that does, um, commercial playground equipment and I would think the numbers we're talking about are actually pretty low, um, from my discussions with him.
I've been, I've been really.
Pretty low, is it?
Go ahead.
I've been working for probably about three years to get reasonable rates for playgrounds because all of our playground equipment, other than Hogan Field itself and maybe Edgewood Park, is going to start aging out, um, fairly soon. Um, these rates that I have now are fairly lower than what I have gotten in the previous years. Um, but I will continue to keep getting prices, to keep getting it lower, but it's, it's expensive stuff.
What happened to the old days when we had swings and slides and everybody was happy? And they lasted fifty years.
I think it would be.
All the kids got hurt on them?
Liability, yes.
It weeds out the dome.
Well, we're getting hurt on it too, but the other way.
Is there, is there a requirement that we have to use the same manufacturer for replacement parts? To be certified, can we?
No.
Who's gonna retrofit?
I'm just asking if there's another company outside of.
Justin's trying to answer.
By any playground.
I'm sorry, repeat that, Justin?
It can be certified by any playground inspector, it doesn't have to be, so if I purchased a Burke equipment, it could be installed by Miracle Playground Equipment people.
But I think the question was if the parts have to be of the same, um, builder, um, for the playground equipment. So if you could find a replacement slide that would possibly fit on that existing equipment and it wasn't Miracle, could you do that?
No, definitely not, we, we will not be able to do that.
Wow.
It has to be the same brand, um, to be able to replace it and it also has to be a certain age because Miracle Playground still makes equipment, but Miracle doesn't make the certain brackets that will fit the equipment that we have now and you're not allowed to make brackets for the equipment because then it becomes, and if anything gets hurt, it's ridiculous.
It is.
So, how much is it gonna cost to go to a, a vote to create a district or expand that existing district?
Oh, I had that quote.
I know we had this.
From Harris and, yeah, I'm sorry, it is, I, I don't even wanna say. I will, it was at least ten thousand.
Yep.
And this is really because of the dinosaur park that would initiate this? Cause what other landscaping?
Yeah.
It's covered with what they are paying currently, right?
Right.
So it's only for the replacement costs of that dinosaur park?
Bingo.
So you'd have the homes in the, in the existing subdivision being asked if they could be taxed more to build the din, to replace the dinosaur equipment. And then you'd be asking, I'm just thinking what this would look like when you mail it out, you know? And you, and then you would ask people that are not in a land, in a landscape district to become part of a district and increase their taxes with the potential increases every year. So I don't, I, it's gonna be a, a tough sell. So it seems to me there, you need to focus on the dinosaur park, whether it's a GoFundMe, fundraising, donations from various service groups and try and do something like that and then see what's out there.
What age group do you think the kids play in that park?
That playground is designated for six to, for six to twelve-year-olds.
Twelve-year-olds, hell, the twelve are gonna be doing here. Okay, so six to twelve.
Heating up my little brother and little sister.
What's the actual size of the lot, do we know?
I don't.
I got a feeling it's less than four thousand square feet, it's not a huge lot. Well, and that's why to Mayor Pro-Tam's point, I think that if you do anything, you, you put your toe in the water at, with existing, uh, people in the LLD first. Because otherwise, eventually, you know, you will, people will be asking, well, what's going on with this slide? How come it's all being taken apart? It was similar to the one at Hogan Field, where why is this being taken apart, why is that being taken apart? Well, because it's old and we have no funding mechanism to replace it. So all that I'm suggesting that you, you inform them now versus wait and, wait until the whole thing's gone, um, just as a service to them, who knows what they're gonna say? But at least they'll know what's, what they're gonna be up against.
It wouldn't hurt to at least give them the option to weigh in on it.
Yeah.
You know, and then, I think it's, you've got numbers that you can put out there and figure out how that would look and whether it's a one-time, I don't know, can you? And whether it's a one-time, I don't know, can you, could they agree to a one-time bump or?
Well, you wouldn't wanna do a one-time bump, what, you mean by, like a one-time increase and keep that increase? Or with no inflator?
Not gonna happen.
I mean, I guess you could, but you could be back in the same boat at some point.
Well, I gotta, I would, I'm, I'm not comfortable, I guess, with. I understand the idea of having the, the, the community surrounding the park and people that utilize it to, to pay for it, I think that makes sense. But when this issue was brought up, um, and, and I was not unaware of it. Um, I, I never, in my wildest dreams, imagined fifty thousand dollars to replace a, uh, eight-foot plastic slide. And so, I don't, I don't think I could stomach any sort of discussion on that and I would never consider that. I think at this point, we let the, uh, the nice, uh, wooden piece of plywood, uh, sit there. And, uh, we just, we just keep that going as long as we can.
Dinosaur park's going into extinction.
Yeah, there's an irony there, isn't there?
We look for irony in this.
And Tammy, this is, this is on for, um, we're still under staff.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
You're just seeking guidance, some guidance.
Well, I was just reporting back on the dinosaur park.
Okay, so guys, gentlemen, I think, you need a vote on this too, Tammy?
No, I don't.
What, how about a consensus, gentlemen, do we all agree that basically we're gonna let this ride itself out for a while?
Yes.
We got a yes, yes, yes?
Still think we all let them know.
We got a five.
I, I think, I think it should be the community that's in that district, they should be the ones to generate that kind of, you know, discussion amongst themselves.
How do we inform them? Water bill?
You can send something out to them, but I don't know that we should be the ones initiating it, if the community wants it bad enough and then.
Well, it's kinda our responsibility.
They rally around it and they come back.
Yeah.
Well, we have to inform them that it's an issue and it has to be dealt with, I mean, a lot of those people probably didn't even know that thing exists.
It, it never hurts to tell people what's going on with it.
Well, I think it's important because I can see it now, well, no one told us, blah, 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 blah.
And that, and that's all that I'm saying, you know, just let them know.
Could we do, we would be able to isolate that environment and send in the water bill a notice?
No, not, we can't do that in the water bills.
No.
Yeah, we, we would have to do a separate letter if we wanted to do something.
I live, I live in that area and I know a lot of the, the families around that have kids that do utilize that park, uh, when they do. And, um, I would, I would kind of agree that at, at this point, we, we let the community, uh, come to the city. I appreciate the mayor's idea of, of putting it out there, but, um, the cost and the logistics of it. I think you just gotta kinda let this one, one ride out for, for now.
Well, if that's a consensus, it is a consensus, is that our consensus, gentlemen?
Well, if that's our consensus, I'm gonna make the assumption that no, he's probably, no, they're probably not gonna think about it until another slide's gone and then another slide's gone.
If you lose another slide, then you'll probably get some more people going. And, and I don't, and I think we could all agree, it's, it does, it's not a good look for a city to have parks with slides out and plywood up. It just doesn't look good and, and eventually you're going to have to address it, but at the cost, at, at what cost, right? I had no idea, again, none of us did, in my wildest dreams at fifty thousand dollars, or we'd have to replace, maybe we gotta replace that entire piece of land. I, because a slide's out.
Yeah.
The other thing is, if we're gonna replace it, let's look at something that's gonna last a lot longer and more durable.
I figured a couple of grand for a piece of plastic too, we can slab it up there and good to go.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
I thought, but.
It's twenty-five years old too.
Yeah.
Now, that, and that's how this stuff rolls, it's pricey, there's a million laws around them. I mean, if you're getting consensus, it'll be a consensus for, cause I still feel we need to send something out to, inform the situation.
In order to, to just send a letter, draft a letter and send it out to the people in that LLD. Is there an insignificant cost?
Well, I mean, it would be postage for the eighty-plus. In the staff time.
Three hundred and forty, fifty bucks.
Well, here's another crazy idea, why don't we put a sign out there?
Could do that.
Let's put a sign out there and say, hey, look, this park. This, however you wanna word it, but inform them that it's not going anywhere as is for a while until we get some sort of, uh, consensus.
Oh, I think a letter would be better than posting it like that, in my opinion.
Reach everybody.
Huh?
That might draw a little navel.
Well.
But the, the, if we send a letter out, because it has been brought to our attention, it's been discussed. Why not just put it back out to the community and say, hey, this is, this is where we're at with this? Um, if you, you know, if they wanna take the matter up, wanna.
Would we send it to the people that are in the district or the ones that we'd like to join the district?
Just the district, just, I would say.
At this time, it would just be the district, I think.
Approximately eighty homes there, is what Jeff said, approximately, so eighty times what, fifty cents, what's a stamp cost now?
Fifty, fifty-one cents.
Yeah.
How much?
Fifty-one cents.
Well, there you go, it's gonna be forty bucks, I think it's worth it.
In the name of transparency, yeah, to tell them what's going on.
You guys feel good about that?
Yeah, I, I just, since it's, since it's been discussed.
And may, we might be able to even do a postcard and make it less.
Okay.
Postcard it, that's.
There we go, put a picture of a nice park over there and all that, great.
Well, on a postcard, I may not have that much room to be able to do that, but.
You want your dinosaur to become extinct.
Okay, so listen, we have a consensus, gentlemen, that we're gonna send notification through the city, either through a postcard or a letter, is that a go?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on, what's next, Tammy?
Okay, so, um, today, uh, Mayor Alz and I both received a email. From the League of California Cities regarding, um, HR thirteen nineteen. Um, early Saturday morning, the US House of Representatives voted to pass, um, HR thirteen nineteen. It's called the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Um, this is good news for California cities because it includes three hundred and fifty billion in direct and fle- flexible funding for state and local governments. The American Rescue Plan is planning to go to the US Senate with an expected Senate floor vote no later than March fourteenth. The League of California Cities is urging cities to send a letter of support for the bill, looking for consensus from the council tonight to send that letter. Um, so this bill is allocating monies to county cities, um, for, uh, COVID relief. Um, from the federal government and, and can be used to, um, make up lost revenues. It's not completely detailed of all the expenditures that you can use. But it can be used over several years where it's not, it doesn't have to be used like immediately.
An allotment of money, we could choose to use it over a period of time to offset the impact of COVID nineteen or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Loss of revenue for different things that we experienced.
Yeah, so you could, you could choose to spread it out over the years if the economy was to, you know, continue to, to go down. Um, then you could use the money towards that. And I did set in on a webinar on it and it's still kind of up in the air about where you can spend and where you can't spend.
But it doesn't hurt us to send a letter.
No, so, yeah, so, I mean, we can send a letter, um, they have some estimated monies that are supposed to be out there. That are coming to cities and stuff and they're really, um, surprisingly high.
Good.
Um, so, um.
If we're gonna bankrupt the state, we wanna get our share.
Yeah.
Okay, well, gentlemen, what's our consensus here, we gonna go through that?
Send it.
Send a letter.
Uh, Crummage? And, and we're good.
We don't think it's somebody else's will, yeah.
We've got a five oh to go mo- move on it, get some money and go crazy and pay some bills.
Okay, and that is all of my staff communication.
Okay, very good, gentlemen, we're gonna move on from staff communication into matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council at any time, or excuse me, at any item that is on the agenda at any time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Uh, usage time may not be yield to other speakers. The determination of whether the, an item is within the authority of the city council is discretionary decision made by the mayor. Do we have anyone this evening who would like to speak on anything, please approach there and, uh, your name, please?
Evening, everybody, uh, my name is Ryan Rotten and I own Personal Defense Systems here in town, it's a firearm instruction, uh, company. And this is my first time addressing the council, so I'm not really sure if, you know, it's on the agenda or anything, um. But, uh, Chief Lackey, I have emailed and called and, uh, since December fifteenth. I've been doing my absolute best to, um, get on the CCW vendor list. Uh, because I have a lot of people that are asking me questions, they wanna apply through the city to get their CCW, they wanna take my class. Um, and, um, I've sent emails and called and even came in to talk to you. But the last email I got back was, I have the date right here. The last email I got back was from Sergeant Flores on the Febru- on February second. Uh, I submitted my paperwork on January eleventh and then I've sent several emails and called, nothing back. On February second, he said, he's finishing up reviewing the paperwork, please be patient, so I said, okay. So I gave him another three weeks and emailed, nothing, and then I emailed, uh, February twenty-seventh, nothing. So I'm doing my best to, uh, follow all the laws, follow all the rules, go through the proper channels and be patient. Cause I understand you guys are busy and I, you know, have the utmost respect for law enforcement, but at the same time, uh, the lack of communication. Is a bit frustrating, especially when I have, uh, citizens asking me, hey, what's the wait time? Should I go through the city, should I go through the county? I've got answers from the county on the wait time between the application, uh, submitted and approval. But I still haven't gotten any answers from the city. So I'm just wondering what my next steps are, what is required of me and if I could get some communication.
All right, well, I don't know if this is the time to get into it, I understand your situation. Uh, Tammy, is it a situation where we have, uh, chief responder, is it something we take under consideration to have a letter written back? What's the deal?
Mark.
Yeah, this is the city attorney, Mark Velasquez, we can't have any discussion on it since it's not an item on the agenda. But, but we can inform the speaker that we're gonna take his comments and forward it to the appropriate department for follow-up.
All right, that makes sense, all right. Uh, I know you're in a situation where you felt like you may have been neglected, I'm sure there's a good excuse for it, or not excuse, but a reason for it. And if you'll be a little bit more patient, we'll try to get this resolved shortly.
Okay, I appreciate it very much.
Please?
What's that?
What is your name again, please?
Ryan Rotten.
You live here in town, Ryan?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
My wife does the, uh, the dog training through the city, um, at the park over there, so.
Okay. Very good, well, we'll take that under advisement and we will, uh, uh, contact the appropriate authority for that particular situation. And you'll be contacted hopefully in a couple of days.
All right, I appreciate it, you guys.
Mr. America, one second, Mark, are you there?
Mark?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, if, if it's okay, I could respond real easily and give him some simple direction right now, if that's okay.
Nope, no, but you could always, um.
Walk outside with him.
You could, you could always, you know, have a, uh, informal discussion with him out in the hallway.
All right, well, I appreciate it, guys.
Thanks, Ryan.
Is there anyone else out there, uh, watching or on the phones would like to have anything they'd like to discuss?
I do.
And that would be?
Yeah. That would be Kurt Ansker, three eight nine ninety.
Sure.
Um, I'm not sure about what's been on the agenda, cause I, I'm looking at it, I didn't see, uh, the discussion about dinosaur park. However, a couple of questions, um, uh, the areas that have parks that don't have LLDs. Uh, how are, how are those replacements conducted by the city now?
I don't know.
We, Hogan Park is the only one, so.
So Sanchez, Sanchez Park's, uh, equipment's gonna fail too, who's gonna pay for that?
Yeah, so, again, I guess this is public comment where we're not really supposed to be responding, so.
We can take that under advisement, Kurt?
I'll just take your money.
Uh, go, I'll go through my list then.
Go ahead.
Um, in regards to dinosaur park, uh, you don't have the money for it because the LLD was set up improperly. Um, I think there's a problem if you try to extend that LLD to other neighbors in there that are not currently part of it. Uh, if there's not enough funds for the repair of that park, then you can condemn it. And let the people come to you to say, hey, we wanna pay for it, or let it go away. Um, the other thing I would bring up is, uh, we were, you know, a little while ago. We were ready to put in, uh, five to seven hundred thousand dollars into a skate park. Uh, we could, why not use that money, uh, to rejuvenate or rehabilitate the parks that we have now? Uh, I would be very interested in seeing that, uh, addressed, uh, if you're gonna go forward with that. If you are gonna go forward with communicating to people that are not currently in LLDs. Uh, I think that we need to include other neighborhoods that are not part of LLDs that use and utilize. Uh, those parks and those, uh, nice things that are, uh, currently paid for by existing LLDs. So I would caution you that, uh, be careful what you wish for if you start going out, uh, trying to bring other people in. That weren't in there originally, and that's all I gotta say.
Okay, um, staff, you've heard what he had to say, you've taken notes. Maybe we can have a response at that next meeting, how about that? All right, I appreciate it. So we can answer those questions in our next meeting, when you do your update, just throw those in there, please.
Okay.
So we have an idea, I mean, the idea of abandoning it, I don't know, maybe that is the way to go, I don't know. Anyway, but you can look into some of that and give us some information, feedback. Council members, are there any more feed, interest, uh, in discussing that park while we're still talking about it?
No.
None, we're done?
I think we can talk about it at this point.
Okay, well, it was under.
It would need, again, it was only under staff communication, so.
Right.
It should be left alone until it goes back on the agenda for.
Sounds good, okay, then that's the end of that, is there anyone else out there who would like to speak? And going, going, gone, we're gonna close that down, okay, administrative matters.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Um, this item before you, um, is requesting approval of a professional services agreement. With JB Anderson Land Use Planning Incorporated for the Municipal Services Review and Sphere of Influence Update. As well as design guidelines for multifamily and senior found, uh, senior housing development projects. In the total amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. And asking for the, uh, permission to have the city manager sign the agreement or authorized to sign the agreement. Um, on August fourth, two thousand and eight, the Escalon City Council adopted a resolution directing staff to suspend the acceptance and processing. Of all annexation applications until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity to support further annexations. As determined in the sole discretion of the city council. This action was in response to the city's adopted sewer master plan, recognizing that the McHenry trunk pipe was at near capacity. With approximately a hundred and fifty equivalent dwelling units, otherwise known as EDUs of capacity remaining. The council also delayed the release of the two thousand and eight municipal sewer trunk and main street lift station improvements. Design request for proposals processed due to the slowing of all development and the downturn of the economy at that time. Since two thousand and eight, the city has worked diligently in improving the sewer infrastructure by scheduling multiple projects over the past ten years. In the city's capital improvements program. In order to compete, uh, complete these projects and assist in the ongoing maintenance and debt service. The city council has approved fee increases to the city's bi-monthly sewer bill. The city has completed phase one of the sewer trunk line rehabilitation project with phases two and three anticipated for completion in twenty twenty-two. Or twenty twenty-three. The McHenry lift station project was completed in twenty twenty and the flows are going through the new lift station. On February eighteenth, twenty twenty, the city council adopted another resolution directing staff to process the pending annexation applications. And continue the suspension of acceptance and processing of all new annexation applications. Until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity to support further annexations. As determined in sole discretion of the city council. As a reminder, the two annexation applications that are currently pending with the city. Is the, uh, property over off of Brennan and one twenty, uh, approximately eighteen acres owned by Carr Escalon Property LLC. And the Seren Luther Church has a two-acre property located behind their church. Um, that is pre-zoned open space or would be pre-zoned open space. In order to move forward with annexation of these prop- properties, the city is required to update the municipal services review, which expired in two thousand and fifteen. The municipal services review is anticipated to take approximately twelve to eighteen months to complete. Back in August of two thousand and nineteen, the city council. Back in August of 2019, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to apply for and submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state of California the 2019 SB2 planning grant, grants application released March 29th, 2019 for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The SB2 planning grants purpose is to provide funding and technical assistance to all local governments in California to help cities and counties prepare, adopt and implement plans and process improvements that streamline housing approvals, accelerate housing production and promote development consistent with the state's planning priorities, uh, which is Government Code Section 65041.1. Of the state's current planning priorities, housing-related infrastructure financing and fee reduction strategies was the most relatable to the city's priorities. Staff applied for the monies by proposing reimbursement of the city's most recent housing element update, as well as funding of the Municipal Services Review, Sphere of Influence Update, and Design Guidelines for Multifamily and Senior Housing Development Projects. The city's grant application was approved and awarded by HCD in August of 2020. Shortly thereafter, the city issued a request for proposals to solicit firms to complete these tasks. Upon closing of the RFP, the city received two proposals, one from JB Anderson Land Use Planning and one from De novo Planning. JB Anderson Land Use Planning completed the city's most recent MSR back in 2011. And De novo Planning has completed the, the city's last two housing element updates for 2016 and 2019. Both firms are very reputable, reliable, experienced with an understanding of the Escalon community and are more than capable of completing these projects. However, JB Anderson Land Use Planning's proposal presented completion of these projects at a lesser cost. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the professional services agreement with JB Anderson Land Use Planning Incorporated for the MSR, Sphere of Influence Update and Design Guidelines for Multifamily and Senior Housing Development Projects and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. The professional services agreement is attached, it was reviewed by legal counsel as well as JB Anderson. And we do have John B. Anderson on the line with JB Anderson. If you have any questions, um, of, of his company or firm, or if you have any questions of staff, I can help answer those.
Let's start with Councilman Billinger.
Um, just a, a quick question to understand this. So we've got a grant for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of money that can be reimbursed to us, is that correct then, the way I'm reading this?
Correct, yes.
So if we were to spend and go forward with this, we would spend the eighty-eight thousand dollars and then we would be reimbursed in a somewhat timely manner. Do we have the funds somewhere available to be able to do that?
We have, uh, budgeted this into the budget, um, so we have, we have the funding to be reimbursed, correct?
Front the money?
Yes, we do.
For that project?
Yes, we do, yeah, we have, we had planned for that.
Uh, Councilman Cromich.
So the, the MSR is supposed to be done every, how often?
Uh, MSRs have to be updated every five years.
Last time we had one was 2015.
Correct, um, and at that time, we opted not to renew it because we didn't really have an idea of where we were going. And we've had a moratorium in place for the sewer system for quite some time. Once you get your MSR completed, it like runs the five-year clock. And so we wanted to make sure when we're moving forward, um, and, and paying for costs associated with the update, that we're timing it right, uh, with being able to, to utilize it once it's approved so that we don't pay seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand to have it done and then have it sit where nothing's happening at that time.
Right, and that was one of my questions. So the, we're going to get, we get the MSR done and that, will that allow for these annexations to take place because they can't until this is done? Is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, the, once we get together with the city engineer and, and the council has approved those two specific annexations, um, we should be able to, um, according to our city engineer, we have the capacity to be able to, to bring those pieces of property in.
But you need the MSR to do.
But we need the MSR to get LAFCO approval. All annexations have to go through the local agency formation for San Joaquin and, and if we don't have an updated MSR that they approve. So once we complete or JB Anderson completes a municipal services review, they take it to LAFCO for approval.
And LAFCO has to approve?
LAFCO approves the reviews and approves it. Um, and then we move forward with an annexation and they also have to review and approve our annexation before we can do it.
And last question, the, did, did this go out for an, uh, RFP?
It did, correct.
The lowest?
Yes, we received two proposals.
Of JB, okay.
Yes.
And how long would the MSR take?
Um, we are estimating 12 to 18 months, uh, JB Anderson.
This report till mid 20.
There's a timeline actually in the back of that professional services, uh, item. Um, we were, we were estimating 12 to 18 months and I believe JB Anderson has it a little, has it quicker than that. I think they're looking more like 12 to 15 months on there. So MSR, which would be page 21 of the review.
Good question. Is it, is it five years from date of approval or from when we like start the?
LAFCO approval. Yeah, once it's approved by LAFCO.
This won't go to LAFCO for 18 months, probably?
Twelve to 18 months, yeah. So, and it depends how it's done. Originally, when, when staff and city was originally looking at conducting a municipal services review, um, we were looking at it, uh, citywide in the aspect that if we could obviously have the, the capacity and capability to take in more than those two properties, that we would kind of do a little cleanup, pull in some areas that are originally in our sphere and, and be set and have it done for maybe the next 15 or 20 years to not have to keep going through annexation. Because we, we have a really good idea what properties want to be annexed and what properties aren't, aren't interested in annexing.
And so that would be included in this, so we'd essentially be ready to go.
We're going to try our best to include what we can, but our priority at this point is to, is to move forward with those, those annexations that have been pending for several years.
Right, okay, yeah, I, it sounds good to me. Um, it sounds like we've gone through the right processes, we've got a good firm. The price is, 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 you know, is, is reasonable, it sounds like. Uh, we went through the RFP. I think the MSR is very important for the future of the town, so, um, I think you've answered my question, so thank you.
And on their, on their, uh, tasks, um, they have it anticipated to go to Planning Commission and City Council in October and November of this year. So we'll see that first review around that time.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, that would be the second review, so the first is in July.
Okay, thank you.
So they are moving, they, they plan to move quicker than anticipated.
Okay.
Councilman Swift.
Yeah, and on that, what other, I mean, you've identified a few other possibilities that would be able to, to be annexed in? I mean, are there a few or a lot, or?
I hesitate to say which ones, but we have had other, uh, property owners in town that have come to the council looking to do projects that are located outside of city limits or we're looking for the city to, um, to provide services to them so that they can construct and the issue being that they were not in the city limits. Um, so if we were able to, we would try our best to do so, but obviously with, with how things are, are working, um.
And you do this app?
We have, we're working with applications that we already have on.
And so this MSR, uh, we get it approved by LAFCO, it would, it would, I don't want to use the word open the door, but it would make it possible that if one of those wanted to be annexed, then what the next move is that they would come up to us requesting to be annexed and, and we would vote on that, that goes to LAFCO as well?
So I would double, I would, I would want to refer to John Anderson specifically on, on other parcels. Um, from my experience with annexations, there's two ways of doing it. Where the, where the property owner initiates it, they come to the city, apply for the application and, and try to move forward. Or the city itself can, during its process of annexation, can put properties that it wants to annex or is capable of annexing on notice, and then they have the ability to be able to reject or, or opt to say no. Um, and so it just depends on where we're at. We, we have a, JB Anderson will have a, a number of documents of ours that they'll need to go through. We've got updates through PACE, um, and things that are moving forward on the sewer side, um, that they'll need to familiarize themselves with. And then obviously make some calculations, work with our city engineer, get numbers together to see if, if we'd even be capable. But at this time, our priority is that, is the pending applications, which are the, one on Brennan, 18 acres. That is, um, as we, as we're aware, is interested in building approximately 75 homes. Um, and then the, the Seren Lutheran Church has that two-acre parcel at this time that they're looking to just have in city limits as open space.
The council wanted to go down this path a year ago, and this is the first logical step of it, so, yeah, it is what it is.
Yes, Mayor?
Yeah, I agree, this is a necessary step. Uh, we've got people that have had their application in for a long time. Uh, we're in a position now that we should take a look at this. You know, we're talking another year before, uh, this makes it through the process. Uh, if it's good for five years after that, no telling what's going to happen in the next six years, but we might as well be prepared if there is an opportunity. Uh, plus it'll clean up some of the, uh, applicant, applications and other issues that have been, uh, festering for a while.
Lingering.
Lingerings ago, or, yeah. You know, so now that we've got the lift station done, we're, and we've got money that's not going to come out of our pocket for the MSR and some of these other, uh, things we want to achieve, I think it's time to do it. Thank you for following up on that.
Uh, how did we end up getting this money? Again, was it a grant?
Uh, SB2 planning grant, um.
Who, who filed for the grant?
The city, I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Good for you.
Um, quite a process, but the state has been, um, pretty good about having technical assistance. So I, I worked really well with the technical assistance on getting the application in. Um, the only thing that was, that was, I wouldn't say difficult, but, but pinpointy is, is the state obviously is their priority is to increase housing production, which is not really our, our priority at the level that theirs are. And so we're very limited on the items that we can apply. Um, and the one hundred and sixty thousand was a preset amount that they designated for Escalon to be able to apply.
To the balance of the money we're getting?
They would probably keep it. I'm going to do my best to get, to get, to get reimbursed for as much as we can, which it also includes staff time, so any time that any of our city staff is utilizing it, I'll be, I'll be submitting for that as well.
Always nice to hear where the state gives us something instead of taking it from us.
Mayor, I got one question real quick.
Sure.
In the study, do you know if, uh, JB Anderson's going to look at the, uh, the land that's, uh, on Escalon Avenue? The, that's currently the orchard, the 18 acres, do you know if they're looking at that land as annexed?
Our land, the city-owned land?
City-owned land. You know if they're looking at that parcel, or are they just looking to kind of clean up some edges in those annexation applications?
So, so even though that parcel's outside of city limits, it's still, we own that parcel. And so the city has the discretion to do whatever they want with the, with parcels that they own.
In the MSR, essentially?
It doesn't hurt to, to annex it in, but it's not required. It has an exemption through the state of California because it's city-owned.
There we go, so it's already contiguous?
Yeah, and, and I've had discussions when we had the skate park item moving forward where I talked to county, um, staff, and they had basically indicated if you own the property, we're pretty much hands-off, let you do what you're going to do with your property because it's, because it's government-owned.
But not with sphere of influence?
Well, that is, I mean, anything outside of our city limits is considered the sphere at that point.
But the difference is we own that property.
We own that property.
Because we own it, it's in the sphere, they're going to turn their head and say, don't worry about it. But because other properties in the sphere we don't own, it's a different ballgame.
No, most, uh, anything we own is in our sphere.
No, no, no. There are properties that are in sphere of influence, but what we don't own, for example, the golf course.
Correct, yes. Yeah, they won't let them move forward with anything.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of the direction right now that I've noticed with San Joaquin County at this point in time, um, is one, most of the land that's around the city is zoned some type of ag, and so they're very limited on the things they're allowed to do. And then when people are interested in moving forward in projects, most of the people that own those pieces of property want to do more than a house and an ADU. And so right away, the county just tells them, no, you need to go to the city to annex. And so that's why at one time we were getting so many people, or, uh, more than normal, um, that we've had in past years come wanting to annex because that was the response they were getting from the county. We're, we're not going to let you do what you want to do. If you want to do it, you need to go to the city and ask to be annexed.
Well, the biggest problem is extending utilities out to them.
Uh, correct, and if, and if they're interested in, in doing that and are that interested in the project, I mean, it's not uncommon for them to pay for that as a part of their project if we annex them in. And that's, that's how a lot of infrastructure is done nowadays, but obviously there's negotiation.
Aren't there, uh, district, not districts, but funding mechanisms that allow people to put that stuff in and pay it off little by little rather than coming out with the money upfront?
Yeah, I mean, they can find.
I thought there was, yeah, because I know that the property across 120 is one of those particular properties that's going to have to have that situation.
Um, and they're very unique as well because any, any infrastructure that they want to put in is going to have to cross the tracks.
Going to have to have a lift station.
And that's, that's where the expenses really, for them, not to mention trying to work with the railroad on getting that completed.
Yeah, it's going to be ugly.
Yeah.
Property's already in this, in city limits.
It is in city limits, yeah, it just has no utilities.
An island out there.
Well, one of the, we'll deal with that later. Okay, next question is, uh, you mentioned there's a hundred and fifty EDUs left.
That's listed in.
That was, that was at the time.
A time, what time?
Before we did the projects that we've done to approve the system.
Where do we stand today with EDUs? Good question.
I want to say the last time we talked to the city engineer, I mean, it was more around, is it 2,500?
Oh, I don't recall that.
But capacity is where we have the issue at the plant.
Well, how can you have an EDU if you have no capacity?
Yeah, that, that's not, we don't have that available because we don't have that capacity available at the plant.
We have the potential of 2,500.
The potential of the lift station is where that number.
So we have, to a certain point, we're good, it's beyond that point, we can't facilitate.
Correct.
Correct. So the lift station, when we put the lift station in, the lift station had the ability to handle that. But our pipeline and our plant don't, do not have that current availability.
Maybe Peter, but the rest, well, maybe Dave too. We're gone. Okay, um.
And that's something that, that is, that's where PACE comes in and is working on that.
All right, and that's fine. All right, is there any more discussion, gentlemen? You want to talk about this anymore?
No, I moved to approve a professional services agreement with JB Anderson.
Oh, I just wanted to remind you that we do have John B. Anderson on the line if you have any questions or if John, if you would like to speak or say anything.
Thanks, Dominique, um, Mayor, members of the council. Um, a lot of discussion on this, Dominique, Dominique did a good job kind of giving an overview. Um, annexation is, uh, is, is a, is a process in and of itself, um, um, directed by the council, quite frankly. Um, can, can, uh, result as out of a, an application that's filed or the city action. Uh, ultimately, it's a decision that's made by the city council for annexation. Um, what Jim Glaser with, with, uh, SJ LAFCO will expect is that we're able to represent the services that are available for the area that we're wanting to annex and that, uh, you know, we're not, uh, and we're being, uh, you know, respectful of, of what's going on and around us, especially, uh, because of the ag, ag area, ag issue, uh, ag preservation, et cetera. So, um, it is, it is, it is what it is, it's a process. I mean, I, I, I'd like to say that it, the document would last more, more than five years, but unfortunately, based on state law, it's five years after LAFCO action. So, um, you know, once, once you do get LAFCO action, you basically have a five-year time clock that starts ticking and then, you know, then the, the document would expire and then you have to update it. The, the, the idea is that circumstances change, um, you know, uh, you know, you get updates to your sewer analysis, your water analysis, all of that will go into this document that's ultimately, um, adopted by, um, by LAFCO. It is, it is a LAFCO document. Um, Jim Glaser will tell you, it's his document. Uh, he does allow us, um, uh, you know, as the city to be able to process and, and, and present these. And, uh, yeah, it, it, it can sometimes be a pretty laborious process, but, um, fortunately, Escalon hasn't been dipping into that annexation, uh, glass very much. So, uh, it's not like you're, you're dealing with multiple annexations like Minnetica or, or Leiprich or, or Tracy for that matter. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it is, but it, it's, it's very structured process and, uh, you know, we're, we're looking forward to helping you folks with this. Um, we're currently working, um, you know, on Leiprich's MSR for the second or third time. And it's just, it, it's one of those things that, you know, if you want to entertain annexation, that you have to, you have to update and you have to go through the process. So anyway, we appreciate the opportunity to work with three of Escalon again and look, looking forward to working with Dominique, uh, on, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I want another question for you, Dominique. Back to, we've talked about 2,500 capacity provided, we had it out the plant, we got the lift station at that point. My question is this, currently, what is our capacity in terms of EDUs that we can meet all the requirements?
So what's at the plant is probably where we would want to determine that.
So we don't know.
And, um.
The number we've been using is about 75 up there, correct?
At the plant, I think we're a little bit higher than that. I want to say we're probably still in that 100 to 150.
And who determines that?
Um, well, we would, we would determine it based on how the, the plant is.
Who are we? Is that the engineer?
It would be engineer, it would be our wastewater treatment plant operator, um, that would assist in, you know.
We have no clear defined number at this point.
Not at this point, no.
Let's get that number.
That'd be part of the MSR, right?
I understand that. I understand that, but I'd still like to have that number, wouldn't you?
Well, that's, I think that's one of the reasons why the MSR needs to go forward, so.
Because we've been talking about it.
Is it fifty? Is it two hundred? So, this will, once this is done, then that has some rational basis of what we have to do.
Well, the MSR can't, has to go because if we can't, don't do it, we don't get LAFCO, we don't get the prop, blah, 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 blah.
Yep.
And we've tried to take what we have currently in land in city limits with no success, because there's no takers for one reason or another. Of course, you know, once we do LAFCO and that comes in, everybody's gonna go, what about us? Well, that's, that's what's gonna happen, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's a possibility, yeah.
Back to my original thinking.
This is Mark Velasquez. I just want a, a quick reminder to see if there's any public comments on this, on this item.
Okay, when I finish up, I will, Mark.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, reason I ask, because there is current development going on in this community, and I'm just curious to what level that would go before we run into a no more. And so we don't really know, but we know we approximately have a hundred to a hundred and fifty, and we're gonna stick with that?
That, I mean, that's where we've been in it. It depends on what type of project, 'cause roughly an EDU is looked at per household, but obviously, if we had an industrial project or a commercial project.
It'd be different.
It's gonna be based on the size of the line and, and the, what they're doing at their property and disposing of, and, you know, and so it, it just depends on the type of project. In the past, I mean, the last several years, it's just been limited a number of houses, and so we really haven't, and then O'Reilly's, a couple of commercial.
Okay.
And so they're, they're not as big as a hit as, as other items, and so we're, that's why I would feel like we're pretty confident in what that number is, unless we bring in some type of big industry or big commercial user or industrial user.
I'm thinking more in terms of our affordable housing project if we build one of those. I'm just curious if we can squeeze it in.
The MSR needs to determine that you can manage your existing land and add in that land, so that's what that will determine.
Yeah.
But, short of that, if we were to do a development of a affordable housing within the city limits, we would still have the capacity?
Currently, yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I was interested in knowing.
We're good for any.
Okay, good. Now, we'll open it up to the public if anyone would like to comment on the item. Please go right ahead. Okay, we're gonna close it back to the council. Council members, any more discussion? You guys are good with this?
I move on staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Very good.
Thank you, John.
Let's, yes, thank you. Are we gonna talk about the revision budget?
Yep, that is our next item, number seven.
Okay.
So, um, on June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty, council adopted the city's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which projected an operating deficit of four hundred and thirteen thousand for the general fund. Staff prepared a budget that contained conservative estimates for both revenues and expenditures. As we, as we have done for the last ten years, staff has conducted a mid-year budget review for the council to consider. The mid-year budget review involves utilizing actual expenditure and revenue, revenue history from the first seven months of the fiscal year, and projecting that history over the remaining of it. Incorporating revenue trends, specifically retail sales tax, investment earnings, property tax, and development fees. Updating capital improvement programs to reflect projects completed with their actual cost, and any additional projects that have developed. Conducting a department-by-department review of expenditures for supplies, equipment, overtime, and personnel costs. Incorporating any appropriations that have been made since the adopted budget. Staff completed an in-depth review of the city's revenues to determine if adjustments were needed to the original budget. There were only minor adjustments to the revenues, following are some of the more significant. We did increase revenues from CARES Act funding of fifty thousand. Um, there were many decreases that were made to service fees, including recreation programs and the community center rentals. Increases for revenues within the development service department based on the trend of increased projects. An increase of fifty thousand in development impact funds based on received revenues from projects. And fifty thousand, um, increase in the supplemental law enforcement service fund, SLUSF. Adjustment to enterprise funds were made based on current revenue trends. The overall change to revenues in the budget reflect a decrease of the general fund total of, in the general fund, for a total of seventy-five thousand. Special government funds reflect an increase of a hundred and thirteen, almost a hundred and fourteen thousand, and enterprise funds had an increase of seventy thousand, for a citywide increase of a hundred and eleven thousand. Staff conducted a department-by-department review of expenditures. All expenditures in each department were examined and adjusted. Adjustments were made to the original budget. Appropriations that have been made since the adopted budget have been incorporated. Included on the agenda is a memo from Chief Lackey regarding the additional funding needed from his department. Um, the following are the significant adjustments in employee services. There was an adjustment for a position in finance from account clerk to accounting technician, was an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. Police overtime reserve salary expenditures were adjusted to reflect an increase due to change in staffing, COVID-nineteen, and coverage for training. This was an increase of twenty-two thousand five hundred. Adjusted staffing for recreation and community center, that was a decrease of thirty-three thousand. The net result to citywide salaries is a decrease of two thousand two hundred dollars. Supplies and services were adjusted. Small adjustments were made to multiple departments that included both increases and decreases. Recreation and community center costs were decreased by almost eighty-eight thousand. Increases to the capital outlay for the purchase of a police vehicle has been added for fifty-five thousand. Increase in water for testing costs, state fees, and the GSA or Ground Water Sustainability Act efforts of twenty thousand. Increase to domestic and sewer for testing costs of eight thousand, industrial sewer testing costs of twelve thousand. Increase to the transit, thirty thousand, based on the, incorporating the appropriations that were approved by the city council earlier in the fiscal year.
Is the thirty thousand, uh, what do you call it, a, uh?
Pass through.
Pass through?
Yeah, those revenues that offset that one, yeah.
Right, right, got it.
And the overall change to the budget reflects an increase to the general fund operating expenditures for a total of eight thousand, and a citywide increase of a hundred thousand. Staff reviewed the capital improvement program and updated it to reflect projects completed with their actual cost and adjustments to existing projects that are not anticipated to be completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The overall changes increased the total CIP budget by, or program, excuse me, by almost three hundred thousand. Uh, there was a decrease to the actual cost for Walnut Avenue reconstruction and water main replacement of thirty-five thousand. We removed Elizabeth Street reconstruction, water main replacement, due to the water line not being constructed with the transite pipe. Um, David Drive and Coley Avenue was added in place of the Elizabeth project, and that's an, an additional appropriation of eight thou, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. Increase for McHenry Avenue sidewalk project rehabilitation, fourteen thousand four hundred. And then we, um, added in the industrial flow meter that was a carryover from the nineteen twenty budget of sixty-one thousand. With the adjustments to both revenues and expenditures, staff is projecting a deficit of four hundred and twenty-five thousand for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. The adopted budget projected a deficit of four hundred and thirteen thousand. It's about eleven thousand dollar difference. Staff will continue to evaluate the process, budget process, and preparation for the upcoming budget for, that should be for twenty-two, twenty, oh, no, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, staff has taken the audit from our fiscal year nineteen twenty and adjusted beginning fund balances. The general fund beginning balance was originally projected to be three point four million. Using actual numbers, it's been revised to three point nine, almost three point nine million. It's an increase of about four hundred and forty-five thousand. With the revised beginning balance and the adjustments to the budget, staff is now projecting an ending fund balance of three point, almost three point three million, and an increase of, this is an increase of three hundred and seventy-three from the adopted budget. Staff has added the additional fifty thousand to the equipment reserve and the hundred and fifty for CalPERS unfunded liability, as approved by the council with the acceptance of the nineteen twenty audit. New projected fund ba, ending balances for June thirtieth include the operating reserve at one point eight million, which is thirty-nine point six percent of the operating budget. Our equipment reserve will be at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Debt services still at, um, seven hundred and eight thousand, which is approximately four years of payments. And CalPERS, CalPERS unfunded liability at the five hundred thousand, with the total general fund balance of three point, almost three point three million. Uh, water fund, the revenue budget was adjusted by current revenue trends, increasing a hundred thousand. Fund balances were updated according to the nineteen twenty audit. As noted previously, expenditures were slightly increased for water testing state fees and the GSA implementation. The overall outlook of the water fund reflects an increase of funds in about nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, primarily due to the up, updated fund balances from the audit.
Question, does that put us pretty much on pace where we're supposed to be now with the water fund?
Yes, yes. We are tracking right where we should be.
Right where we, okay.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
Uh, the sewer funds, municipal sewer fund revenue budget was adjusted slightly by current revenue trends. Fund balances were updated. The overall outlook of the municipal service fund, sewer fund reflects a decrease of funds of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The industrial sewer fund budget was adjusted, um, based on current trends, and the fund balances updated, and it reflects a decrease in funds of about a hundred and seventy thousand. Part of that is, um, our sludge removal out at the plant kind of got ahead, and so, um, we were a little bit ahead in some of our CIP projects in nineteen twenty. Um, normally, we would remove sludge and, right at the beginning in July, and we actually removed it in mid Jan, in mid-June, so. Uh, storm funds, fund balances were updated according to the audit. The overall outlook of the storm fund reflects a reduction of funds of about fifteen thousand. Um, the city is subject to the MS four permit for the state of California, and each year continues to be additional, have additional demands of monitoring and improvements under the permit. Future drain improvements estimated at eight hundred thousand over the next ten years. Our current storm fees are collected via property tax, and in order to increase them, we would need to go out for a voter-approved increase. Our current rev, revenue is not supporting the continued cost for storm, and we will need to continue to look on how these will be funded in future. Attached to the staff report, you will find, you had in your pockets the updated general fund summary, fund analysis summary, revenues, expenditure summary, capital outlay, and the capital improvement summary sheets. So, staff is asking council to approve the mid-year revisions for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, as identified in the staff report and attached documents.
I have a question about this. How do we have to approve this? Isn't this just a report? What do, what do we?
So, I am, I am making a changes to the budget, so, 'cause I've adjusted budget line items, that, that's what you guys would be approving.
What if we don't approve that? What happens?
Well, then, I can't make any increases. I can't, um, so part of that was an increase to the police department for staffing and for the vehicle. So, we wouldn't be able to move forward with those.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got something, Dave? Anything?
Um, just looking at the, the mid-year adjusted budget numbers, I assume those are twelve-month numbers?
Yes.
Okay. Um, looking at the water and the sewer sections, I'm looking for an explanation on how we came up with the numbers for the management fees. For the water, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in management fees for that?
What, hey, John, the staff report, are you on?
I took a screenshot. It says twenty-eight of forty-four. Not sure if that gets you where you need to go.
Yes. So, um, let me see. Uh, where am I? Got a little bit more to go. You know what? So, is it this screen?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I even bookmarked it and everything and made myself go through all of that. Um, so you're talking about the management fees, right?
Yeah, down in the water and the sewer section, we've got a hundred and twenty-four thousand for water, and collectively, a hundred and seventy-eight.
For, yeah.
For the sewer, so that is for us to pay for what?
So, management fees come from, um, the finance department and the legislative department, and they are allocated out by, um, it's, it's a combination, so it's based on the cost within a department. There's a whole formula and spreadsheet that we had, um, developed, and it is all formula-driven, um, and typically goes based off the amount of the expenditures. There are some exceptions that are pulled out of those numbers, the, um, so that the, that.
I guess my question is, is what are the ratepayers getting for that money? Is this to process the invoices?
No.
And bills and stuff? What is that for?
No, so that's for these actions here, like, that helps contribute to city council when you guys take actions and supporting these activities. That's, that takes care of supplying a building where ratepayers come in and make a payment. That takes care of, um, most of your legislative, your, some of your attorney costs with the, in those general items. So, it's, that, that's basically for the level of management over that. None of my time goes specifically to the water fund. It's all allocated, all allocated through management fees.
When you're saying staff, are we talking about internally here in the city, or are we talking about the employees working out there at the sewer, on the water?
Um, well, I specifically called myself out in, in regards to staff on mana, management fees. Um, if somebody works in a specific area, then their labor is charged to that specific area and wouldn't be part of the management fees.
So, the hundred and twenty-four is directly tied to the cit, the internal staff here?
It's not all, yeah, to an extent.
And the attorneys and all the other stuff.
Yes.
But it's basically inside here.
Well.
It's inside the.
So, so some of the staff, though, is allocated specific to water department. Those that do the utility billing, they have a certain percentage of their salary that is allocated to the water department.
So, that doesn't drop under salaries and benefits for that, for that, um, the first line item under salaries and benefits? The time that we would take in this office to.
So, there is a portion, so there is a portion of the staff that is in city hall that would be shown in salaries and benefits of the water department.
Okay.
And there is a portion of public works that would be shown in the water department. But there's some overall administration, um, that does not get allocated specifically to water. That's where the management fees come in.
So, let me ask you this. Of the management fees you collect, are they consumed in a year's time?
So, the management fees are directly related to what the actual costs are, so these are all budgeted numbers. But, but when those numbers, when they get charged out to departments or to enterprise funds, it's based on the actual expenditures. So, whatever it costs in the management finance and in the legislative department, that's what gets allocated out.
My question is this, though. When you have this number come up, it's based on a formula, you said?
Correct.
Well, how does that formula know what the costs are gonna be for you allocate that money from the formula?
Well, I have to, it goes based on salaries and operating expenditures, and so I have to put in all of those budgeted numbers, and there's certain, um, there's certain expenditures that are pulled out of there, like, large contracts are pulled out, and those don't get considered into those expenditures, and then it's allocated based on that.
Is it operating costs that determine that number?
It's operating and salaries and benefits.
It's all the same, yeah. Okay. So, that's who came up with the hundred and twenty-four, and then the amount, same with the water, it's the same type of deal?
Yes, yeah, it's all, it's all based on a formula.
So, some of the wages do come out of those two numbers?
So, twenty-five thousand dollars a month in management fees between water and sewer are absorbed for those two programs, is what?
Yes.
This line item is telling me.
Mhm.
And it's made up of, you've, based on that formula, a percentage of this building?
It's, it's.
The cost to run the building itself and.
And staffing, and, uh, wifi, or the internet, and computer maintenance.
Does it, does it cover, does it? Does it cover, does it cover the billing, is that part of the billing or is that under salaries and benefits? So the ladies up front that are sending out the, my bill every two months.
Yes.
Is that included in that hundred twenty four, is that under salary and benefits?
That's, some of that is under salary and benefits.
Like to see the formula, I'm just curious how that math works out.
I, uh we actually had a consultant um that helped me with it and I can look up when we did that and his, his um.
I'd just like to see the breakdown on, just so I have better understanding of it.
It's pretty convoluted um the way that, I mean, there, there is a lot of, there is a lot of entries. But it's hard to, I mean, so otherwise, you know, the water department had its own office. And a single staff, they would have to pay for that office and that staff. So we take what it takes in combination for um. Whatever um others, other staff time, so staff is, all of the salaries are allocated out. Between either departments or the enterprises. And so if they have some staff time that goes into legislation or management, which would include payroll. Um and those kinds of things, then those get allocated out in the management fees. But we do allocate some direct employee expenditures to water, especially with the utility billing. Because that's a good chunk, so.
I'd just like to see it, cause that twenty five thousand a month between those two funds for management fees. Seems a bit excessive to me without understanding everything that's rolled into that, so that's why I'm looking for more clarity on that.
Is that, with that information like for that formula breakdown, that wouldn't be in the act- the annual audit, right?
No, it's not in the annual audit, no. No, we, we had a whole presentation from the consultant when he did this and he came in and did the whole presentation on this.
Okay, if I can get more information going forward on that, just like.
Okay.
Councilman Kremich.
I have nothing.
Councilman Swift.
I was just seeing that presentation, it's probably when everybody's eyes glazed over, when they should have probably been taking notes. Um, no.
Uh Vice Mayor.
No, thank you.
Okay, now, after our last meeting and we voted on the water situation. Before the meeting, I'd already got calls and I got calls after it, I got a total of about a hundred and thirty emails or uh Texas, I guess. Responses to my question, my question was, how is the water bill affecting you? The majority of the people felt use helpless, that they had no say in the process, they felt like it was just overwhelming. They couldn't, they're having trouble budgeting for water and they wanted to know if we go to a thirty day billing instead of sixty day billing. That was one of the things they talked about. And there was one lady mentioned she had six kids and she says, the water bill is horrendous. She says, imagine paying for six children to take showers and baths. Then the other thing that came across was uh ideas on how to get the water bill down. One lady had a great idea, I thought, and she mentioned a uh sales tax for uh infrastructure. I don't know if that's legal, I don't know if it's possible, but it sounded pretty dang good. I mean, if the town would vote a infrastructure bond, not bond, but deal like we were trying to do with the police department, pick up. Say a penny, I don't know what that would work out to in a year's time, but it would spread it out. To help offset some of the burden, because what's going on now in this town for those who don't see it? Is we're having a lot of impact on these elderly people and marginal people in terms of income. Now, we may have a average that is higher than most cities, but we also have other people to worry about, other than the average. So along with David, I'm more interested in going over that budget again with David. And I wanna go through this budget and try to understand it, so when I explain to people why they're getting charged what they're charged, I'm giving accurate information to them. Because at this point, I'm confused as it could be. And I, I understand you have mechanisms and you have this and you have all that, but it still doesn't answer questions that I get asked. And I need to understand it better and I think David feels the same way. Uh but I would like the staff to consider looking into a possibility of doing a uh district. Not a district, but a funding mechanism through a sales tax initiative. That's come up with more than one person and I think if we could do that, we might be able to soften the blow on these people. Because you take water, you got sewer, you got this annexation things coming up with all these changes. I'm not sure how much more we could put on these people's back before they go nuts out.
That'd be a good question, I wonder if Mark can answer.
Well, maybe Mark can answer it, Mark? Are you with us?
Um, yeah, I'm with you, I could answer some of this generally, um we're under council member communication, so. I don't want any, us to get into a big long discussion.
But we're still under the budget.
We're still under the budget, Mark, you can go to it.
Ah per- perfect, per- perfect, perfect, um you can. Yes, you could do a sales tax and yes, you can apply your sales tax almost any way you wanna see fit, it could go to the general fund, that's where it does go, so. In that regards, if you're looking as a sales tax increase to offset some of these other costs, it is possible to do that. I understand that the city just lost recently um. Uh s- uh specific sales, uh not a sales tax, a different um.
No, it's a sales tax measure.
Same thing.
Special tax.
Special tax for the police department.
Right, so special taxes takes two, two thirds, whereas general taxes take only a majority. Uh so generally you wanna do that majority. You wanna a tax that's, you could pass with the majority, not the two thirds, cause it's almost impossible these, these days to get, you know, two thirds of the electorate to vote on something. Or tax.
So let me get this clear, Mark.
Short answer is, it's possible.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Alright, so again, after a hundred and thirty of those returned comments, I think we have an issue here. And I know we need water infrastructure and we need the cost to cover and all that, I get the whole bottom line. But at the same time, I, I really believe we should explore this possibility of a. Sales tax to offset some of the burden on the infrastructure. And I'd like to go over that budget a little more with David and try to understand it better, so when I'm giving answers to people, I don't feel like I'm completely an idiot. Because there's just so much involved, I'd like to be able to give them more detail in a way that they can understand what we're doing. But again, we need to look at this thing in ways that we can find some relief. We got seniors sixty five, a bunch of them said that they're living on a limited income and they're struggling with this and that, and we're gonna hit them again with a sewer increase. And we're gonna hit them with a garbage increase, I don't know, I just don't know where it's all gonna end up. And I just, I, I worry about it, I do, I care about these people and I know we have a business to run here, I get it. But at the same time, I think we need to go over this thing a little fine comb and look at this thing and make sure we did everything that we could to help these people.
And like you say, your advantage with the sales and use tax is that that's everybody passing through town.
And that's true, we, 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 we actually get help.
Yeah, we've got, yeah.
With our funding because of that. And the other thing is, we have, there's, there's a whole day of discussion we could have on possibilities of funding things. I mean, I still don't agree with the fact that we store six hundred thousand dollars plus of that water money that's supposed to go to the reservoir. I don't believe this town will ever see a pipeline from the reservoir here, ever, it will never happen. You're looking at fifteen grand, fifteen million dollars today, what are we saving that money for? That should go into our new well, I mean, I just don't agree with that thinking process. And I would, I'd care to dip for with anyone, I just think we're crazy. I think we have money we should be using to offset the burden of this community, cause this community's getting hammered. So I've said my little piece and I would like to meet with you Tammy and David and we've gotta go over this water budget between the three of us. We'll pick a date, we'll get together and we'll go over it. Because I feel obligated to those people that call me and ask me to do it, I'm gonna do it. And David's willing to do it with me, so if there's any, no objection amongst the other council members. You're good with it, you're good with it? So we'll set up a time, David, we'll talk to Tammy in the near future here and we'll go over it. Uh also, I'd like staff to consider looking into that funding mechanism we just talked about. And that's all I got really to say, so.
You gotta vote on this.
I'm sorry?
We gotta vote on this.
We have to vote on the.
The mid-year.
On the mid-year budget?
Oh absolutely, I'm sorry. Alright, I'll accept a motion for that.
Move on staff's recommendation.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, there you go. Now, staff communication I guess, huh? Let's do it. Councilman uh Aljor.
No, I think I'm good with this point, thanks.
Councilman uh Kremich.
Thank you Mayor Alves, um congratulations uh chief on, on getting a couple new officers, uh they seem like nice guys, well spoken. Um looking forward to seeing them around town. Um the reason I asked about the MSR and the, they, the, the city owned land. Yeah, I just think that it's important to think about that, I honestly can't think of a better location for. Some sort of development for this community in between a golf course and a, and a, and a community center. And I just feel like there's an opportunity there and I hope you guys think about it, cause I know it's gonna come up, it's gonna come up every year. Or, or when that lease comes up and the trees and I just wanna keep it kind of on the forefront, I don't wanna let it slip back. As well as the capacity at our wastewater treatment plant, I think those are things to keep in the forefront of a. A, a planning ahead sort of mindset with a, a governing body. But other than that, um I think that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, uh Councilman Swift.
Yeah, briefly, chief, are those Officer Cruz and Fagoni, are, are they officers or reserve officers?
Officer Fagoni is a reserve officer, Officer Cruz was a reserve transferred to full time.
Okay, that, that's what I thought, yeah, I'd like to reflect on what officer, I mean, on what uh Councilmember Kremich had mentioned. Give him a big kudo for us, be a big addition to the, to the force and thank again, thank you very much for giving those efforts. And uh I think they're gonna be great additions, also wanna give a couple kudos to. Federal Works Department, that uh project along McHenry, you know, working on it, it's almost, looks like it's almost done. Looks like people can walk down there again and I think it's become a perfect example of again, what Ann Shaddick said a few months ago, coming up to the council. Um yeah, we do listen, we do listen, okay? You know, it goes both ways, let us know what's going on, because we may not know everything that's going on out there, but we do listen. By the way, that's why I think that was a good idea, you know, having that Facebook post too.
Absolutely.
You never know.
It tells them we're here and we do care, it's just we can't read minds.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's all.
Uh Vice Mayor. Yeah, I think the MSR going forward is uh important, you know, we, we need to be prepared. Um to look for ways to generate revenue for the city uh within our footprint as much as we can. But uh you know, we don't wanna turn away viable projects that might be right on the edge or surrounded by. City property, if we can get those annexed in, I think that's a good thing, especially if it's a project that's ready to go. Uh generates more revenue for the city and uh kinda disperses that load onto more people than just the, the people that are existing in town. So I think it's a win-win for everybody, I agree, we need to look at uh management fees, we have to look at any time that we're looking at rates. We need to be diligent, making sure that we're not overcharging and that we're uh using proper, proper formulas and moving that money around. But I also think that over the last several years, we've been on a path to improve the infrastructure in this city. It's nice to see that it's coming to fruition with the lift station, the pipes being re-sleeved. Uh looking at a position now to where we could actually justify going forward with the MSR. Get a better picture of where we are as far as services go and see what we can do to, to uh provide some additional housing in the community. I know that it's a limited inventory and even with our growth ordinance, uh we're not talking about huge growth, we're just talking about growing. Uh enough to make sure that we can continue to provide the services uh necessary for the community, so.
Cash flow.
Cash flow, mm-hmm, so I think I really like, you know, it may seem like it's a very slow pace and it may take a long time to get there, but we are. Uh on a path and we've thought this out long term and we're slowly moving forward on it in a manageable. Uh way to make sure that we're not, you know, increasing our debt load unnecessarily and we're focusing in the right areas. To make sure that we can continue to provide good, solid infrastructure for the community. That's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh Dominique, on, I think it's Irwin, going down First Street, you turn right on Irwin, there's a new shed built. Are you familiar with that garage they built there, it's on Hogan's property, a guy named Hogan owns it, one of the Hogan kids. It's on the corner of Ulri, excuse me, First and Irwin, it would be the northwest corner. Adjacent to Dugo's property, not Dugo, but what the hell is his name? The guy that did the room addition and the remodel, the house, we made him pour the sidewalk against the wall, the uh pole, remember that? And moved the mailboxes? Trina, bingo.
Okay, so you're talking about the corner lot on First and Irwin?
I am.
Okay, uh different, newer, new property owner now.
Okay.
Updated from.
Hogan.
Hogan, correct.
So it's been sold?
It was sold, I mean, that person's lived there a few years now.
Okay, didn't know that.
Yes.
The other ones put the fence out front?
Correct.
Nice, okay, tell me about the building.
Um all of those items went to planning commission for review, so there was a variance on, it's been a while, it's probably been a year. Uh but, but that project was approved.
Understood, is that a commercial building?
No.
It's res- considered residential?
Next question, sidewalk, why isn't there a sidewalk board too? Um he, he's supposed to put it in.
So that is part of it.
Been talking to him about it the last few weeks, yes, he is required.
Perfect, it's part of the agreement.
Correct.
Good enough, thank you, uh how many full-time officers do we have, chief?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay, and how many part, uh part-time?
Reserve pool is down around five.
Five, okay, how about stars, do we have any stars left?
Um yes, uh Mr. Willis, th- there's three.
Three, how about cadets?
Uh right now, that's changed over and with COVID, we kinda suspended the program, but.
Prior to the suspension?
Four.
Four. Okay, do we have any program, programs in place to increase the population of the cadets and the stars?
Yes, we're actively recruiting anybody interested. Officer Hargr- or Sergeant Hargraves has been reaching out to people that ha- we have had some interest, but follow-through has been.
Yeah, it's typical, yeah Graves, okay, so Hargraves has got that under control or at least he's working on it?
Yes, sir.
Good enough, alright, the MSR, what does MSR stand for again?
Municipal Services Review.
Okay, good, uh yeah, I agree with everybody here that it's something that has to be done, it's not an option. You know, you gotta do it, if you're gonna do anything, you need it, it's kinda like you can't go out in the boot, mud and if you have your boots on. The two properties in question are depend upon this too, we can't bring in the land on uh Brennan and one twenty without it. That's correct?
Yes, depending on that.
Also applies to the church?
Correct.
Okay, whatever become of the property? That is on the, right next to the church's property, it's that big open, open field there off of Miller.
That's the, that's the second, the second uh parcel listed under Seren Lutheran, they own that, that piece of land and they, and it is outside of.
It's like ten acres.
No, it's two, if it's the one on.
No, 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 one be- not behind the church, but behind the church's land, there is a parcel land that used to be owned by Dale Hogan. And a gal from Mantica, which I can't recall her name, at one point they wanted to do a development there, it was gonna be a senior project.
Just a little pasture, right?
Yeah, there is a pasture, correct, whatever became of that?
I don't know.
I never heard of that.
Heard of that.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it the one by the blacksmith shop?
That is correct.
Yeah, 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 that's in the county.
Well, no, if you go down Miller.
That was Burrows.
That William Burrows?
It was Burrows.
It may be, I don't know, if you go down to Miller, you cross uh Stanislaus.
Mm-hmm.
And you go past the housing project where Oliver used to live, that land, where, actually it used to be Oliver's ranch, I think.
I don't know who Oliver is.
Same thing, I don't know who Oliver is, yeah.
I've been here twenty seven years, I know.
Yeah.
Anyway, so it's Oliver's property is back there and that land, uh I, at one point was, was being pushed for development for a senior project. And I just wondered, I had that, uh the other day it dawned on me, whatever happened to it?
I mean, if it's not in city limits, then they wouldn't have been able to do anything.
It's county?
Yeah, it's definitely county.
It's definitely county.
Okay, so that's county.
I would, yeah, I would know about it.
So the, the property that butts up to the um blacksmith. That property, the original owner Burrows passed away.
Left-hand side.
On the left-hand side and that property sold.
Right-hand side.
So then on the right-hand side, I've never heard of anybody come to the city since.
Yeah, Dale Hogan was trying to bring that in, Dale Hogan, he had a partner out of Mantica, he called me on it and I remember. I don't think it got to the point where it actually went through any process, but I was just curious if there was ever any.
I don't, I mean, it must have been a while ago?
Oh god, yeah, probably good seven, ten years ago, let me ask you this, what, is that property in the city limits, do we know?
No.
It's not either?
No.
Okay, well that takes care of that, alright, does anybody else wanna sum up anything, we're done? Uh Gary, go ahead. And Gary's buying it, everybody, alright. Yeah, wish, okay, so. I'll be buying a few, but uh any, there's nothing else, chief?
March thirteenth, tickets available.
March seventeen.
Oh, March thirteenth or seventeen?
Seventeenth.
March thirteenth.
One final thing, chief. One final thing, chief. I want to thank you for doing a great job on the things that you've been tasked with.
Uh.
I've been, I don't know what, uh my eyes have a magnet. Every time I walk in this town or drive a bike, I find graffiti. I don't know what the deal is, but it's, Ed, we're over here, we're over here, Ed, over here. It just happens. I don't know where in the hell it comes from. Anyway, thank you for indulging me in taking care of those things and the community thanks you. Thank you for today's deal you did for us. I appreciate that. Once you know, you're appreciated.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And also staff, we also love you guys too.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're done?
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. See you next time.
Say again, please?
I've had a lot of help, thank you.
On which one?
Everything I've passed you.
Of course.
Go ahead, Mark. Did you want to say something, Mark?
I was just saying goodnight. Yeah, I was just saying goodnight and I'll see you next time.
Sleep tight, Mark. See you later.
Night. Don't let the wood bites.
Alright, we're out of here.
Alright.
Just like.
I gotta, I gotta bring you, I all got, I got to go with you guys. You got a bunch of them.